All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much and welcome to the December 13th meeting of the Board of Education of the Chapacua Central School District. We have been in executive session since 5:30 PM discussing contracts, potential litigation, and the employment of particular persons. Can I have a motion to come back into public session?
I move that we resume the public session.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Am I in favor? Okay, can we stand with pledge, religion, flip, and hand?
(inaudible)
That's the best pledge I've heard. That is really nice.
We should definitely give them the first one.
I know.
It was really led by the kids.
Yes, we love that.
Nicely done.
Okay. Thank you all for being with us tonight. I have just a couple of quick things to mention in the presence report. I just want to thank the PTA who hosted a very lovely holiday lunch for the administration and the board members. They're a great partner. They really treat us very nicely and work so closely with us in so many areas and we wanted to thank the PTA for always being so wonderful and for having such a lovely holiday lunch in the celebrating season. I would also like to mention that yesterday we had another meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee for the Athletic Department. A lot of stakeholders are represented there, the faculty, their administration, teachers, excuse me, coaches, we have students, I myself, and they're representing the board. We will be reporting back on that, but we're really moving forward, going over the results of a community survey and thought exchange in terms of how to align our seven to 12 athletics in the district. And I think that's going very nicely, led by Jonathan Costa, and we will be reporting back to you on that. I also wanted to recognize the Chapacua School Foundation, who held a very successful game night event last week, and they are continuing to raise funds and bring great programming into our district.
The Scholarship Fund.
What?
It was the Scholarship Fund.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, the Harst Greeley Scholarship Fund. There were two separate things I wanted to say. Harst Greeley Scholarship Funds Game Night. So they are continuing to raise funds to help our Greeley grads afford college, which is obviously on everyone's mind these days, this time of year. And so that was, I know Christine was there and some other people from the community. And I wanted to also recognize, my apologies, the Chapacua School Foundation. You're going to hear tonight, I think Adam may talk about this, we have moved to a consent agenda, so a lot of these items, we anticipate approving, but we wanted to talk about, we will mention some Instagrams that are going forward tonight, all three from Grafflin, as it so happens. And we also will be discussing later this evening, and you'll see that come up after all our presentations tonight, some office hours for the board, which we have been talking about in terms of having more community engagement and giving the community an opportunity to speak with us outside of the board meetings, that this is really our business meetings and isn't therefore a back and forth, so we're going to talk about that, and you can hear that discussion a little bit later. And then just wanted to wish everyone here in our audience and here at our table, very happy holiday season, because this is our last meeting before the holidays, we don't come back until after January, so that's it for the presence report.
So, thank you. Jane, I really appreciate your report and I want to start-
Trying to go fast, we're late, I'm sorry.
-by sharing that this is our meeting where we always have a musical performance, so before we introduce our fabulous students from Grafflin, who will kick off our student presentations this year, I'd like to introduce our new chorus teacher, Mr. David Catalongo, who will be bringing up the Madrigal Chorus, who will be sharing with you two pieces this evening.
Excellent, thanks so much.
So, we're very excited. You guys look wonderful.
Good evening, I'm Susan Maguire, very excited to be here. Thank you so much for attracting me to the board, and having us. First song we'll be singing is "Sevi Bonn," a traditional Hebrew song, and in the arrangement, Carol with the Bell, as well, as her present.
(singing) Sevi bonn, so, 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 alu ka, hu, hatso, alu ka, hu, hatso. Sevi bonn, so, 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 asim ha, hu, la, nezka do, hayasha, nezka do, hayasha, asim ha, hu, la. Sevi bonn, so, 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 alu ka, hu, hatso, alu ka, hu, hatso. Sevi bonn, so, 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 asim ha, hu, la, nezka do, hayasha, nezka do, hayasha, asim ha, hu, la. So, 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 alu ka, hu, hatso, alu ka, hu, hatso. Asim ha, hu, la, nezka do, hayasha, nezka do, hayasha, asim ha, hu, la. So, 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 alu ka, hu, hatso, alu ka, hu, hatso. Asim ha, hu, la, nezka do, hayasha, nezka do, hayasha, asim ha, hu, la. Asim ha, hu, la, nezka do, hayasha, nezka do, hayasha, asim ha, hu, la. Sevi bonn, so, 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 alu ka, hu, hatso, alu ka, hu, hatso. Sevi bonn, so, so, so. (applause)
(singing) 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 For our next tune, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Bartlick.
(laughing) And we're so happy to be welcoming Grafflin tonight, and these are our student presentations facilitated by our administration and our faculty, so I'd like to-
Yeah, I won't sing. No pressure. Yeah. I'm gonna, this is such a pleasure for me to be here with these teachers and students tonight, and I don't have a lot to say, other than I just want to introduce them and our theme, which this year is Grafflin Grows, and we've been talking a lot about growth mindset and how with hard work and perseverance, we can succeed, and I think these projects are two examples of just that. So I'm not going to talk on and on, I'm just going to introduce Mrs. Cohen, who will talk with you about the third grade PBL this year.
Thank you. Good evening. As teachers, it is our job to make learning come alive for our students. One way we can do this is by creating authentic problems that our students can solve. When the third grade teachers at Grafflin started planning new lessons for our new science curriculum, which is based on the next generation's science standards, we knew that this rich subject matter would give us the opportunity to create such a scenario for our classes. Our team collaborated with Ellen Paradiso, our library media specialist, and Elizabeth Rose, our teacher, to plan a project that would allow our students to follow the Chapacua design process. Elizabeth also brought in Chris Kazer, who's a Greeley art teacher, whose former career was in game design, to talk to our students before our project began. We utilized the Global Learning Center and many of the flexible spaces in our building to get this important work done. Four of my students are here with me tonight, and this is Minyoung Suk, and this is Colek Corr, and Nate Pavelo, and Abby Su, and they're here to explain to you exactly why project-based learning is so important, what the project that we did was, and how they went through the design process. But before we do that, we want to present to you the problem that the students themselves were presented with, starring Mrs. Bartlick and Mrs. Austin.
This is so embarrassing.
(laughing) Hi, third graders. We need your help. Grafflin is going to open a brand-new game room this winter, but we have one problem.
We don't really have enough good games for everyone to play, so that's why we called you all together today. We need your help.
And based on what you've learned about forces and magnetism, we need you to design and build some amazing games that all of our students can use, so we'd like to hire you, the teams at Grafflin Gaming Design, to do this important work.
We are counting on you to save indoor recess.
Are you in? Game on!
(singing) This is great.
(singing) Okay. Sorry.
What is problem slash project-based learning? Problem-based learning is when students discover or are presented with a real-world problem and they find a solution to that problem. By doing research and through trial and error and design thinking, we learn concepts related to math, science, language arts, and social studies. Why PBLs? Kids can get a hands-on experience with different topics and learn team-building skills as well. We enjoy the experience and get more enthusiastic than with regular lessons. If kids just think about how things work in their heads, they don't actually know if it is so easy to work. You need to actually build it, and if it doesn't work, you can go back and revise. You need to have something that kids really like to do and care about, and a way that students can learn great things can happen from initial failures. That's why project-based learning is so important to the kids at Grafflin.
(singing) Some of these have little teeny video clips, and so do you want me to play them before, Abby? Okay.
(singing) Here, try to get me. (singing) This is Nate explaining one of his games.
So, you have to launch the magnet to hit one of the targets, and each target is worth a point. This and this is worth a hundred, those two are worth seventy, that and that is worth ten, and this one is worth five. And if you go to the ground, all of those are ones.
So, when you shoot, how you'll know if you hit a target is there are magnets behind the cardboard, and the magnet that you're launching will attract to the magnets behind the cardboard, so that it'll stick in between the cardboard and you'll know exactly what value you got.
The PBL game room project. During recess, we needed more things to do. During recess, we draw a player and I play on our iPads over here. So the teachers decided that we should use what we learned in Science 21 curriculum and create games using what we learned about magnetism. For example, we learned that opposite magnetic poles attract, like magnetic poles repel, and magnets attract different kinds of metal. We used our knowledge about forces and magnetism to create our games.
Step one.
Are we using the cover up here?
Put each player on the start box, which is over here. So all of these little magnets, guys, are faces. That's not the step box. The box is over here.
Yeah, then, yeah, then step two.
Oh. Step two is take a magnet and then swing it around. Like, you have, you have to get the, and on the opposite side of you, so, yeah.
Okay, what's this?
So it will-
It's a field goal.
And, oh, and this is, this is-
A field goal.
Yeah. So you have to get this thing up, it's the field goal.
Two, one, and good. It's a field goal.
Think, make, reflect. These are the steps to the Chapacua design process. First, we brainstormed writing down all of our ideas, even our craziest ideas. Then we narrowed down the list by choosing our two favorite game ideas. The next step was to make. At this point, we built our game prototypes. We tested the prototypes to see if they worked. We looked at both form and function. Then we decided which idea to produce. If things weren't going well, we revised our ideas as we were building. The last step was reflect. We looked back and to see what we could have done better and how we could have done it. We also looked at what we did well and reflected on what we learned.
After we finished, we invited our kindergarten buddies to play our games. First, we explained the games and rules to our buddies. Then they actually played the games. After they played the games, they told us how they thought we could make our games more successful. We used this information to make our final iterations. The game room opened for business after Thanksgiving break. Students from every grade level have been playing our games and really enjoying them. Thank you.
And we'd like to invite all the board members to come to the game room, because it's open.
(laughing) All right.
When is the game room? When is the game room open?
It's open now, it's open, well, actually, I guess we, the game room is manned during their recess, so they're actually giving up their recess time for the other grades to come in and play the games.
Okay, we'll be there. Excellent. Okay. So, before we, before we transition to our next segment of the presentation, are there any questions about the gaming process?
It looks great, so thank you for presenting to us, it's really exciting, and I guess I just want to ask any one of you, does this make it more exciting to come to school?
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely.
Do you have any ideas for additional games you want to create?
Okay.
Not yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
How long do you plan to keep it open and keep it running?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah. I like it.
As long as I let them.
Okay. Does anyone run out of masking tape? That seems to be-
Or for the rest of the year.
For the rest of the year, that's great.
Well, this, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you give the game a name?
Yeah, we all did.
So they all have different games, so I don't know if you want to know what the names of their games are.
I would love to know the names of all of your games.
My game's name is G2100.
Well, what do you have to do? You have to explain it.
So, there's basically a number card, and there's like other cards. You pick a number card, let's say I got a one, and you get your character and you move it to space one, but then if there's a ladder on it, you pick the other card. If it says float, you get it, you get out the dowel, and the two magnets, you put one down, and then put the other one down, see if it floats. If it floats, you can go to where the magnet ends, but if it doesn't, you have to move back one space.
Can you tell them what makes it float? Why does it float?
Because the magnets repel.
Oh, gosh, that's great. Someone else want to explain their game and the names of the game?
My game is called Magnet Ski Ball.
Ooh, Ski Ball, that's a fave. How does it work?
It's kind of like a cardboard ramp, and you have to roll a ball very enough to try and get 100 points.
Okay. Do you guys want to explain your games in the back?
So my game is called Sunset Shootout, so you basically put a magnet on one of the, one of the launchers, and you try and get it to stick to one of the targets, and you have, you have eight shots, and you, yeah, yeah, the target has a piece of tape that has a number on it, so that's how you know what you scored.
Great.
My game is called Magnet Race. The point of the game is to get to the other end before the other person does, and you move by repelling the magnet. So, let's say I won, I would get five points, and the other person would get four points. And you play two times, whoever wins the last round gets six points. If it's a tie, you do rock, paper, scissors, and whoever wins wins.
Rock, paper, scissors gets in there now.
That sounds great. Have you guys gotten to play each other's games?
No.
Not really.
(laughing)
You did give a feedback, remember?
Yeah, sort of, though.
So they had a little bit of time, not a lot. I guess they'll be the final ones to play in the game room.
Those supervisors deserve the time.
They're putting in all the work now. Well, we really appreciate you coming and sharing your learning with us tonight, it's just amazing, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next group, we have a fourth, two fourth graders and a second and third grader, who are going to talk a little bit about a photography project led by Ms. Rose called Grafflin Through My Eyes. Some of you may have seen it, we had some docent tours earlier this fall, and it's been a really exciting project, so here we go.
Hello, my name is Caroline Irvanoff. I'm a student from Mrs. Glicker's fourth grade class. I'll be informing you about the project of Grafflin Through My Eyes. Grafflin Through My Eyes is a project where almost every student took a photo of something important to them at Grafflin. The main purpose of the project is to take a closer look at things all around us and learn how to communicate visually. Ms. Rose has taught us about the Rule of Thirds. It's basically a grid that is divided into nine equal parts. The sweet spots are where the lines intersect. The sweet spots are basically drawn by human eyes, like most kids draw on candy. We, our work is speaking to the person viewing it. We wanted people to really carefully think about what we're trying to show. I chose to take a photo of Mr. Listengard, our music teacher. I really like music and we have a lot of fun in class. I chose to show him at eye level rather than bird's eye view or worm's eye view, to show how he treats us on our level. Mr. Listengard's head is on the Rule of Thirds to put emphasis on Mr. Listengard's face. The dark green shirt also contrasts with a light background. This contrast also places emphasis on Mr. Listengard. Contrast and emphasis are principles of design. I hope you get to visit Grafflin soon to see our photography projects, if you haven't already. Have a good day, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan, I'm in second grade. Mrs. Rose gave us an assignment to take photos of whatever we wanted to in the school. She taught us about a worm's eye view, bird's eye view, and eye level view. When I took my photo, I looked for things that looked cool and tried a bunch of different angles and views. I was planning my composition. I was thinking about what I wanted other people to see. I saw what other people were doing. They were doing very cool stuff, like crouching down sideways and things like that. I took photos of the cafeteria and the upper meccum and a plain old tree. However, the one picture I picked to exhibit was of the cafeteria. I chose my photo because no one else took a photo of the same thing. I wanted my picture to be unique. The diagonal lines in the floor create a sense of movement. The squares in the floor create a pattern and rhythm. This is what I see every day when I go to lunch. Now my artwork is hanging in the second grade hall, and it makes me feel happy that other people get to see it too. I hope you come to Grafflin to see it.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellie Casantino. I chose my stained glass photograph because I loved how the sun shone through. I want other people to see the beauty of what I saw. Looking at beautiful things makes me happy, and I wanted other people to notice this and feel happy too. When I see other people's pictures, it helps me see things in a new way. For example, the sunflower Owen photograph, I really like it, and it almost makes me feel like a little bug because it was taken from a worm's eye view. I think Owen is showing us how important the sunflower is by shooting it from such a low angle. I also like the yellow, blue, green, and blue. These are the colors next to each other on the color wheel. Colors next to each other on the color wheel are analogous colors. Colors are related, and that makes it feel peaceful. It creates a kind of harmony. If I were to do this project again, I think I would take a photo of an assembly at Grafflin because it shows all of us, kids and grown-ups together. I have a question for you. If you were to take a photo showing other something about your life, what would you take a picture of? I really like this project, I hope you'll come visit, thank you.
That's great.
Hi, I'm Owen Lansford, and I'm in fourth grade. I really like this project. When we started, I noticed that other photos were very dark, so I wanted to, I wanted to do a bright, unique, and different photo. First, I used a viewfinder that Ms. Rose gave us to plan our photographs. I tried to put the flower on the Rule of Thirds. Ms. Rose taught us about movement, so I took a photo with the main stem and the sunflower on an angle. I also thought about how the stems and petals created movement. I tried to make the flower look really bold. I shot it from a worm's eye view, like an ant looking up from the ground. This makes the sunflower look important. I took my picture because I wanted to show that Grafflin is a very nice school that a lot of kids and bees share. Bees were flying around the flower when I took the photo. Bees share the flower and the pollen and help each other as a community. The bees are like the students at Grafflin. This is what I was hoping that other kids might think about when they looked at my photograph of the sunflower. Before I go, I wanted to tell you about a photo that another student took of a puddle reflecting off the school in their shadow. I really like this photo. It made me think about what an artist is trying to say about Grafflin in their photograph. I think maybe he was trying to get us to notice the reflection of both the building as well as the shadow of the student at the same time. I like looking at the shape and space in the photograph. I feel like this artist is trying to connect us as we move through Grafflin each day.
So, this is a short video that shows some of the work, and we have to give a shout-out to Steve Listengard. He's our resident filmmaker, he's really talented, and he helped us with this project.
Hello, my name is Abby, and this is a piece of artwork that I took a picture of, and it's my favorite one because it kind of looks like you're imitating the shapes, like it's infinity of the shapes, because it just keeps on going. It looks like there's a door and it's a hallway, but then it also looks like, each one is a musical note, like (mimicking music). And it kind of looks like you're just walking through a hallway, and it looks like a door right there, and that's why this one's my favorite.
My name is Jane, and I like this picture because it has a lot of colors, and I like how it blends in with all the summer trees and the green and the fall trees too. And I also like how it blends into the sky. The tree branches make shapes like triangles, and the branches, they all make crazy stripes.
Hi, I like this picture because it, like, they all, the person who took a photo of it, like, like, put the, like, like, a big contrast over it, like, like, the green leaves, like, a big part, the caterpillar is a very small part, and the flowers, a medium part. And they also found a way to put it all in the Rule of Thirds, and I find that really, like, cool, and the colors, like, they all go together very well.
I really like this picture because it, the picture emphasizes the droplets of water and it shows movement in the picture.
I really like this picture because it's like an extreme bird's eye view looking down at it and like it reminds me of a roller coaster because it's upside down and I really like roller coasters. And it like makes my belly like all mixed up and like, it makes me kind of dizzy and like it makes you look at it for like a really long time.
The photography project runs up and down the hallways through the entire school. Art is everywhere. We notice something new each day. You really have to come and see this to understand the full impact.
The Grafflin Through My Eyes project was inspired by my passion for developing empathy, visual communication, and artistic skills in children. Our district's recent migration to one-to-one iPad devices made it possible to attempt this ambitious project. Virtually all of our students now have access to their own photography lens as a means to express their own vision and a point of entry for seeing and trying to understand someone else's point of view. My goal was for the children to step into someone else's experience at Grafflin to develop and reinforce empathy through the arts. After learning about how to create a strong visual composition, the elements of art and the principles of design, the children use viewfinders, brainstormed and planned. Students in grades 1 through 4 use the design process along with their understanding of composition, elements of art, principles of design, to create a photograph reaching a significant aspect of their experience in our elementary school community. The challenge, what do I want to communicate and how will I do that? How will the viewer interpret my artwork? If that's not what I intended, should I make another iteration? Or is it okay if my work is open to interpretation? Are questions that all artists, including our student artists, must ask themselves. As an artist and an art teacher, I have lived inside the design process all of my life. Nearly all of the skills and attributes that CCSD highlights in their profile of a graduate are learned and strengthened through the arts. Our K-12 arts curriculum provides our students with the foundation in problem solving, critical and creative thinking, communication skills, self-direction and perseverance. When our district began to focus on empathy, I delved further into this topic, reading Empathy in Education by Bridget Cooper. Cooper's text reveals that in order for an individual to develop moral and ethical behavior, empathy must first be developed. In the same way that reading engages students in empathy, creating, viewing, and discussing art does too. When our students walk the halls and study the laws at Grafflin, I hope that the children further develop empathy as they put themselves in someone else's shoes, engage in a dialogue with one another, and reflect upon the many different perspectives of Grafflin Through My Eyes. The following is a small sampling of some of the over 500 photographs on display at The slideshow and video you enjoyed were produced in collaboration with Grafflin's music teacher, Mr. Steve Listengard. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board?
So Ellie, you asked us a question, what would you take a picture of? I would take a selfie of me, my wife, and my three children, even though I have children and more, they're adults, cause I think that would tell a story about my life. So that's what I would take a picture of. I have a question for you, what kind of camera did you use?
Um, we used our iPads and we used the App Camera.
Okay, great. And you know that when you get to go to Greeley, the seniors at Greeley take pictures of their fellow students and you put them in the yearbook. That's, they take the pictures like for your yearbook. So I can't wait to see when you guys are seniors, what kind of pictures you're gonna take, because you walk around Greeley, you have pictures of all the kids who take photography in Greeley and their pictures are hanging in this building as well as the Ed Center. So, you guys have a lot to, to look forward to. We have a lot to look forward to what you guys are gonna do. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The photographs are beautiful. I think it's really tremendous how you made it look like an art gallery in Grafflin. So I'm wondering if you've been continuing to take photographs, any of you, at home, around town, anything like that? Are you still using your iPads around school even, even though you don't have to take photos? Are you still taking them?
Um, sometimes we take photos in school about projects or if we wanna back things up just in case. We don't really do this project many times as an assignment, but we sometimes do do them for fun, cause we get access to those photos that we took photos of and that we say, oh, this could be our Grafflin Through My Eyes kinda photo.
I actually also made one of the games that they did.
Oh, great. Your photographs are beautiful and it's, it's a great exhibit, so thank you. You did such a wonderful job and I just wanna say thank you and you spoke so well, so eloquently, as did the students who came before you. And I also have a question for the teachers and administrators. This, I can't help but think, and, and the reason that I asked a question that I did to the previous group, does it, does this make it more interesting to come to school? Is, I, I think a lot about the talk around the state and, and around the country about improving student achievement in general. We don't have, fortunately, too much of that problem here. Chapacua students achieve at a pretty high level, but student achievement, I think, really depends on engagement. Really strong student engagement and this kind of work is really what can move the needle for a lot of, a lot of students, um, across the state and around the country. Cause if they're not engaged, they're not going to learn. So, I just wish we could sort of bottle, bottle this and, and spread it around and I just oftentimes think of ways of doing that. We have so much here, so many resources and very high achievement and just a great model. And, and so, you know, that's just an open question to you, how we can, I don't know, sort of spread this message, which I really would love to do in some way, but, but thank you so much for the work that you're doing. It's really very meaningful. I wanna thank Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Rose also for, um, just for really, you know, sparking joy with all the, with all the children and, um, I, I think, I see that they, they've not only enjoyed the photography, but I love how they're, you know, pointing to other people's photographs and what they really learned about their fellow students. And it seemed like you enjoyed seeing everyone else's pictures as much as taking your own. Yes. So, I would just like to say, I, I am blown away by so much of what I saw tonight, but most importantly, by what I heard. And the way that you talked about the work that you did in your classroom with each other and yourselves around these photographs is just amazing. I've been in the game room, it's wild in there. And it's exciting and it's all about learning in a way that's really engaging. So I wanna thank your faculty, um, who came tonight to share your learning with us and your administrative team for being present and your parents for allowing this opportunity to, to glimpse into the, the windows of Grafflin and see the great work that's happening in there. And then I also, I gotta acknowledge, even though they all left, cause I'm sure they're studying, our high school kids. And David and their singing tonight was amazing and, um, you know, that, that was, I, I hope our community has an opportunity to see that, um, when they view our, our video or maybe there's some way we can capture it and send it out for the holidays.
Did they have their concert yet?
No, their concert's next week. So. And it was so great to have, um, it was so great to have our elementary school students and to hear the high school students. I, I remember when my kids were at Grafflin, cause that's where my kids went, and I remember looking at the, the high school kids and thinking, oh my goodness, I just don't understand how that will happen, but, um, so it was nice when the, the two communities can come together. So thank you again. We'll take a three-minute break, so I know people need to go. Ready? Okay, so I'd like to, um, continue the superintendent's report. I'll try to be as exciting, I will try to be as exciting as what we just saw, but I'm not confident. Okay, so the first, um, thing I would like to share is that, uh, save the date, next week, we have been administering our, um, MAPS assessments to our students 3 through 8 in ELA and then MAP and we have a parent information, um, session. We'll have some administrators there, but we also will have representatives from the company and that'll be next, uh, week at 7:00 PM at Seven Bridges and we've pushed out some information to our parents and we're encouraging them to attend and to register online so we know who's coming. Um, so two important updates. First, I'd like to congratulate Dr. McCarthy. I, I, I thought, is she still, there she is! So, um, Heidi, as you can see on the, um, agenda tonight, she has, uh, decided to retire. And so that's after 38 years of service and education. Nine years in our district and so, um, we're really excited for her. As you know, we honor all of our retirees in, in June, so of course we'll invite Heidi to be a part of that, um, but Heidi's, um, contributions to our district have been incredible over her, um, tenure here and, you know, it's bittersweet. We're happy for Heidi to be able to, um, spend more time with her family and move on to the, um, this next phase of her life and, but we also know here, you know, this will be a tremendous, um, um, task for us to, um, fill this, this, uh, role for us. So, um, what we plan on doing is, um, sending out just a communication to our, our, our families that fall under pupil personnel services, particularly our special education families tomorrow morning, to let them know that Heidi has retired. And then at our next meeting in January, I wanna talk a little bit about the position and how we're gonna move forward in that direction and, um, the search process. So Tony and I will probably, uh, talk a little bit about that together on, uh, January 8th. So again, we congratulate Heidi and we look forward to honoring her in June. Um, and then I just wanted to share that Dr. McGough continues her work here in the district, so over the course of the past month, she's been doing a lot of interviews onsite and now she's digging into our testing protocols and procedures. And then I anticipate that probably in January at the second meeting, she'll be prepared to give an update to the Board of Education at, at our business meeting. If that, uh, changes, I'll, I'll let, I'll let the community know. Um, as Jane had mentioned, the athletic strategic plan process is underway and we have just engaged the community in a thought exchange and we had a, recently had a meeting, we had three major themes that were identified through this process. Um, and the thought exchange, uh, is an opportunity for students and parents and, um, staff and the community at large to give some feedback. And through this process, uh, three areas were identified that, um, are, will serve as the focus areas for the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, the first is working to improve the quality of our coaches and supporting them and to improve the systems in which goals are set and feedback are provided to our coaches and to provide a pathway for athletes to provide, uh, feedback, um, to improve our overall program. So these are three, um, emergent themes that came from the thought exchange, um, process. And then as we, the process of Strategic Planning Committee continues, um, I anticipate that Jonathan will come to a future Board of Education meeting and present with you. The summary of what? Yeah, and what our, and what our target areas will be moving forward. So, um, I just wanted to, uh, share with you that we have an author visit coming up as, as soon as we get back from break. Um, the PTA is sponsoring, uh, Dr. Lisa Demore, um, who will be here visiting the district. She'll be doing some professional development for faculty. Um, she, her, uh, recent publication is Under Pressure. It focuses on, um, stress and anxiety in, in, in young girls, so, uh, we're gonna encourage our, our families to attend this session and we're grateful for the PTA, uh, to provide an opportunity for our faculty to have some specialized conversations around this issue with, with, uh, Dr. Demore. So, thank you to the PTA. Um, I asked Adam if he could talk a little bit about the Instagrans on the agenda, so.
Yeah, um, we wanna thank the Chapacua School Foundation once again for their generous donations. There, you'll see three, um, items on the agenda, three different Instagrans. This, this month, they all come from Grafflin, so there's a first grade grant from the first grade teachers for, um, flexible seating in first grade to give students options to sit on and stand at when they work and when they read and, um, engage in, in other academic activities in class. So that'll just give the teachers and the students some flexibility. Then the second grant, it also came from Grafflin in kindergarten and to give the teachers and students some options to have some, uh, vertical work surfaces like easels as, as shown there. And then the last one is gonna impact the, the whole school at Grafflin and may serve as a model, um, for the district moving forward where they're, they're actually working with, um, the Greenberg Nature Center on a recycling program. So there's an educational component and there's also some supplies and signage involved to, to increase the amount that we recycle, um, at Grafflin. So that's a nice model program. So those are the three grants that the CF, or Insta-grants that the CSF is supporting this month and thanks to the Grafflin teachers for submitting them and the CSF for, for making them possible.
Um, so I just wanted to follow up. We had, at a previous meeting, had discussed, um, our strategic plan and program alignment. We had talked about regulation adjustments in terms of supporting our kids through, um, guidance and providing access to counselors at the elementary level. So we had been in discussion, um, as a part of our alignment process of having a consultant, um, group, um, take a look at our, our guidance department and our program collectively, K through 12, and providing some meaningful feedback to the district to make some adjustments if necessary to support our students and families in the best way that we can. So, um, we have a consultant agreement on the contract, on the, on the agenda tonight as a follow-up, um, to conversations that we've had about, um, taking a, a deeper look at our, how we're supporting our, our students through our guidance program. Um, oh, so on the agenda tonight, and this is a joint, um, jointly funded effort between the district and the PTA, I'm so happy to share that we're able to secure the author of IGEN to come and speak to our students, our staff and our families on March 11th and 12th. And I had, um, asked Lisa to, uh, give you each a, a copy of her book. We've done a lot of work around the IGEN, um, I generation and the themes that are noted in the research, um, around students that which we serve today that are, that are departed from the way that, um, students, um, of previous generations felt about all kinds of issues. And so, um, we've done a lot of work around that with the administrative team, the social emotional learning fellows and, um, my, uh, students, uh, fellowship group. And so, we're very pleased to be able to have, um, the author by generation, Dr. Tweens to come to, to district. So, um, her contract is up for approval on your agenda, but, um, I, as you can see, because she is a, a leading expert, um, she is, uh, very expansive, so we're happy that the PTA is, uh, going to co-sponsor her, um, so that we were able to, uh, bring her to district. And we will open this session up to, um, the larger educational community as well. Um, so I asked Jen, we had, um, John, we have a larger item on the agenda about the heating system in Greeley. So this stems back to an issue that we were experiencing last year with a steam pipe where we had to rip up the front of the parking lot here. So, um, John, do you wanna just talk a little bit about this resolution?
Yes. You will see the resolution is to approve a contract with KGND, uh, which is our architecture firm. And, uh, you remember in the beginning of this calendar year, uh, we had to declare an emergency, uh, uh, project and that was because the steam pipe broke. And, uh, remember, we had to block off the road for a period of time and we were able to do a partial, uh, repair, but at the end of the day, we thought that the best way is actually create a separate heating system for the, the, uh, athletic, uh, uh, center, uh, fitness and, uh, athletic center. So this is the, um, the, the, uh, proposal from KGND to go forward this, the, the, the design.
Um, so also on the agenda tonight, so we've been talking, uh, over the course of the past year about a, uh, a partnership that we've had with the foundation to, um, to build a plant sciences and bioclimatic, um, center outside of the steam lab here at Greeley. So, um, we have been leveraging funding support for, to support this, um, this building from multiple sources. So we're at a place now where we need, um, we've gone through an RFP process and we'd like to recommend to you that KDNG, KDNG be the, um, primary designer of this, um, project for the district, but we also know that this is such a nuanced area that, um, really, cause we've gone out to site visits to see many different places that really only, um, colleges have constructed in their spaces. So we actually have a consultant agreement, um, with Rhoda Moyer from Cornell to help us with, um, our design process as we move forward to, to construct what this'll look like here, um, at Greeley. So we have two contracts on the agenda to begin the process of, um, designing and preparing for, um, moving forward with, um, the Plant Sciences and Bioclimatic Center here at, at, um, in the district. So, um, as this process- So as this process unfolds, we'll come back to the board with more updates. But right now, we're in the beginning stages of what this can even look like. And the exciting thing about this project, but also the challenging part about this project, is it doesn't exist anywhere. So there's a lot of work that has to be done with KDNG, with State Ed, and with a consultant around how to move forward in a way that everybody is comfortable with, that aligns with the instructional goals that we have been working on collectively with our faculty at Greeley and the foundation to help support this project. So I think probably at some point in the future, when we're ready and we have a design, we have a design prototype for your review, we'll present to the full board with KDNG. Oh, and then I also, before I share my happy holidays greeting, I just want to mention two things. So first, the Single Point of Entry Committee here at Greeley has come to a conclusion of their process. And as the board knows, they have, over the course of this fall semester, have been analyzing survey data and have gone on multiple site visits and have met multiple times to make a recommendation to me to recommend to you how we should move forward in terms of security in this district. So I will be presenting a recommendation to the Board of Education at the second meeting in January. So I just want to forecast that out. And then tonight, Andrew Cresselia had planned to present grading to the Board of Education based on some decisions that were made before I arrived here and before he became principal. But as he started to dig into the new system, it warranted more time for consideration. So I anticipate that he'll be at the second meeting in January to talk a little bit about where he is and how he recommends us moving forward based on his deep look into what the new proposed grading system would really mean for our students and how it would impact their transcripts. So finally, I just would like to just take a moment to wish everyone happy holidays. I would like to share that our offices will be closed over break. So if fam, and we will send this out next week, but particularly our high school families, if they need any documents or they need any support that needs to occur before students leave on the twentieth. Because aside from facilities being open for custodians, we won't have any office staff available to help any of our families if they need any documents, which typically happens from guidance. So we'll make sure we get something out to our high school families. But I do want to wish a happy holidays to everybody. So, thank you.
Can I just make a comment? I'd like to note that since we've switched the consent agenda, I've noticed that your president's report is a lot more detailed about items in the agenda. And so I'd like to say that this is a great development. And we're actually learning, I think the public is actually learning a lot more about the items in the agenda than they did before, when we were just going item by item. Because we have time to go a little more in-depth into things that are most meaningful. So I just wanted to note that. And I think that this is really great. And thank you for doing that.
Right, we all feel it's really been a positive change in that our items, you know, our matter-of-course items can be approved, and the ones that are in there that we really feel the community wants to hear about in more depth, Christine mentions, or we can talk about the superintendent's report. Adam can jump in on curriculum, or John, or I sometimes mention in the president's report. And I think as a result, people are really getting at the information that they find most vital to them.
That's right.
So we hope that this has been a positive change for all of you as well. We're all happy about it. Okay, so we still have a presentation. Want your presentation?
Well, we don't, yeah, so the one thing that we had talked about was office hours. So did you want to talk a little bit about your thinking around that?
Yes, we have talked about this, I think, back during our board retreat over the summer. And it's something that has been talked about, and we've mentioned in numerous meetings about how we can connect more with the community, which, and I think a lot of the people who are present now, who are members of the PTA, know that our board meetings are for board work. And it's, as much as we allow for public comment, it's really not for a dialogue. And we always make ourselves available because we want to hear from the community about issues that they have, questions they have. And we always make ourselves available by phone to have a cup of coffee, to have a meeting, et cetera. But we know that there are times that people just don't realize that, you know, this isn't the form to have a discussion. We need another form. And we're always looking for ways that we can better communicate with the entire community. So one of the ideas that we had talked about is the concept of office hours. Even though we don't individually have offices here, we are volunteers, we have thought about a potential location, probably at the ed center. There's a conference room there. And we've talked about, obviously because of open meeting laws, we cannot all be together as a board to have office hours. We would be rotating, having one or two people so that it's not a majority, and that to have some sort of form where you can come in with a question, or an idea, or opportunity for a discussion. And we had talked about doing this on perhaps a bimonthly basis, having something available during the day, and sometimes in the early evening for people that are working. So we just wanted to talk about it here in public and maybe kind of finalize this amongst the board members to see what we really think would be viable and would work for the community.
I think yes, I think that it's just another way in which we can communicate with the public and be available. The fact that we can switch the hours to morning or evening is important. And, you know, it's just a matter of setting the calendar. And also, I think it's important to be flexible.
Yes.
There may be times where there are issues that come up that might require more office hours than at other times. So, I mean, even if we set a schedule, again, I think we should try to be flexible.
I think so.
With the need.
Right, we had, I mean, there had been some discussions about starting out every other month. And we can, whether it's a sign up amongst ourselves or we figure that out, and the community, I hope, knows that we all communicate with each other. So anything that's brought to us and gets communicated out, we'll all be aware of. And we will try and share any information that we individually learn while we're at these office hours. But I don't know if any of you have thoughts in terms of the chunk of time, the block of time that you think would be appropriate?
I feel like it's going to be a little bit, sort of as Vicki was saying, trial and error.
It is, yeah.
And we'll see, I mean, I think it's a great idea because as much as you make a point, Jane, of saying each week that, you know, each meeting that we are accessible and that we welcome phone calls and emails, I think that people don't always feel comfortable reaching out in that way, and that if there's a less formal, but maybe at the same time more formal, method of being able to bring concerns to the board, that that's something, you know, that people may avail themselves of if they don't know any of us personally and don't feel comfortable reaching out. And so I think, you know, maybe, I guess my instinct is to do like an hour, hour and a half in the beginning. And if we find that we're sitting there twiddling our thumbs, we leave it. And if we find that there are, you know, twenty people waiting to talk to us, then we do longer the next time. But I think that hopefully the community will sort of bear with us a little bit through the growing pains, knowing that we honestly walk this to work.
So I think that that's something that will work out, and we can discuss in terms of the-
I have a concern, though. My concern is if a community member comes to court a formal office hour, are they going to feel that they're going to have more say in what happens? Or they feel that this is going to be a method to get something done than would normally be over a conversation? They feel that people in the board wouldn't be able to make commitments to them? So I think, you know, if you sit down with someone, meet with someone in town, have a cup of coffee with them, it's one thing. To have a formal office hour and have people coming in to meet with a board member, I think that, I don't know. I'll, if you guys decide to do it, I'm more than happy to participate. I participate, I'm always willing to participate in anything. I just have some concerns.
Right, okay. I mean, my view of it is, to me, it's the same as if having a cup of coffee with someone.
But it's not. It's your meeting formally in the ed center.
I understand that. To me, it's more just setting a time and location to make it easier for people, but no change in what that meeting means. Again, it's just access in a different location. That's the way I look at it, and to make ourselves more available. That's my, you know, personal view of it. I would hope, and perhaps this is a message that we'd have to communicate out, is that, you know, there's no difference if you speak to us in a room at the ed center versus a cup of coffee at the train station, it's the same conversation.
I've never had anyone tell me I was, you know, was unable to be accessed, that I was not available.
Right.
Had we talked about doing this at the library at one point versus the ed center?
We did, but in terms of the construction right now, I think that was what was challenging as that gets finished. And we thought that, you know, and again, we can be flexible and it can move. I think ideally, that would be very nice, to have that in town. But, you know, just in public, or we just wanted to get an idea if people are comfortable with moving forward and setting it down, and again, being flexible to see that and making sure that we also send a communication out. And we'd have to talk about how that gets pushed out into the community so that they're aware of the hours, just in terms of trying to track people down or things like that. I just think it's just ease of access for the community.
So, yeah, I mean, I think you guys all know that I've been a strong proponent of adding some forums. And I think this is a really good place to start.
Right.
And I do see your concern, Warren, about it maybe feeling a little bit too formal, that people feel like they're actually able to be making requests. But I think that we all can manage that conversation and make sure that people understand that it's really not different than giving us a call or sitting with us for coffee. We're just trying to make it a little bit easier for the public to have those conversations. They don't have to have my cellphone number. And it may be because my kids are still in still in the middle schools that I don't run into as many of the high school parents or the empty nesters in town. And I'd like to be able to be more available to them as well in a way that I think is simplified for all of us.
And I think sometimes, you know, I've found when I've talked to certain members of the community, people sometimes just want guidance on how to address a particular issue they have. And they don't necessarily, they may not know any one of us. So they could be, to me, intimidated. Who do I call? Who do I email? And so that's just a place where they could say, you know, this has been on my mind. I'm not sure how to address this. And some people might not care whether they, who's ever sitting in the desk for that hour, hour and a half. But it's just another way to give them some guidance as to how to address an issue that they might have.
I mean, this is not a new concept. The board has discussed some variations of this over the number of years I've been on the board. I know that, Warren, we used to talk about doing something like the PTA coffees that we have for the budget. We have one in the morning, one in the evening. We've talked, there have been, you know, some thoughts over the years about doing coffees throughout the year regarding different subjects. So this whole idea is not, it's not really a new idea.
Right.
But, you know, the office hours is just another iteration of the concept of providing more opportunities for meeting people.
I'm not averse to it, I just think we have to set-
We have to set clear parameters, yes.
Right.
Okay. So I think then maybe we can discuss putting it on the calendar after the new year, and we can work out the details. Sounds good. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our presentations. We are moving on to committee reports. I can quickly jump in and say that we did have a meeting of the Communications Committee. And I'm hoping, after the new year, that we will be able to have on our agenda someone that is going to help us more with our strategic communications and our push out of some good works that we're doing. So we have been talking to people, and I am hoping that we will have information to follow on that with someone that we like. Yes?
I can pop in as well?
Yes, go ahead with all committee reports and meetings.
The Wellness Committee met on Monday, November eighteenth. So two highlights that were discussed were the switch to a recess-first model at two of the three elementary schools, which has been going well at the participating schools, and the potential introduction of plant-based meat alternatives at Greeley. So generally, the feedback on the recess-first model, meaning having recessed before lunch for the kids, has been positive from all parties involved, both the administrators and the kids. At Greeley, the Sustainability Club has been asking for meatless burger alternatives in particular. And the PTA is working to schedule a tasting of, there's one brand of plant-based burger that is available through Armark, our food service provider. So the PTA is working on collaborating, on scheduling a tasting of that, and surveying student interest to determine whether there's interest at the price point, which would be higher, and I got the impression would be substantially higher, for the plant-based burger versus the regular already-on-the-menu meat burger, and whether it should be introduced either just on the meatless Mondays going forward or to the everyday menu. So we'll see where that goes.
Can I ask a question about the recess-first? I don't really know, but isn't it better to move around after you eat? Is it better for the kids to digest their food and move around rather than eat and then go and sit in the classroom? I just wondered what the thinking was. And I'm no expert.
I think some of the thinking, and what seems to be working, is that after they run around, it's hard to settle them. So if they only need to be settled in the cafeteria, then they go back then, ready to learn, versus coming out of recess, still in recess, and then taking about twenty minutes to settle and they get back to the classroom. The kids seem happy. I will report back that the kids seem to like it.
Oh, so they have done this? They are doing it?
Yes, they are doing this at two of the three. I know they're doing it at Grafflin. I think they're doing it at West Orchard, is that correct?
They started at all three. And it really didn't work at Grafflin and Roanoke several years back. So at one time, only West Orchard had it. And starting this year, we also have Grafflin starting it. And what, you know, they have studies done. Actually, one of the records, you know, the information, I can send it to the board, is that actually, if you have recess first, when they come to lunchtime, they are actually calmer, and actually, they eat healthier.
Yes.
I won't say larger amount, but they would eat this variety, and they actually, they will have a better lunch.
I recall when I was on Health and Safety Committee when I first started on the board, that there was really quite a bit of evidence that recess first is now the preferred model.
There's always a preferred model and 10 years from now, they'll tell you that was a mistake.
Right. But I think, but I think when you, also with exercise, a lot of people go out for vigorous exercise and then come in and calm down and have a good meal. And I think that it's more in line with that and then they are ready to go back to the classroom. The research does support it and we, I remember getting very positive feedback back from Jim Skook and West Orchard that they found it was working quite well. And I know that, you know, I think the other schools are moving towards that now because it has been a very positive thing. So.
It doesn't sound right to me, but you know what, the research is there and if people are happy with it, then so be it. It just seems healthier to me to move around after a meal. Yep.
And the policy committee met and we have a few policies on the agenda. I will discuss when we get to that place.
And for facilities, we know that there's some concern at the library. We've gotten some letters on that and we're working with the construction people to see if we can move that along.
And I guess I should mention as sort of advocacy goes on in my role, I did testify at a Senate Education Committee Foundation Aid set of hearings that they are doing around the state. You know, just as background, after many, many years of litigation back in 2007, the Court of Appeals established a right to sound basic education under the Constitution using a Foundation Aid formula. And the formula was never run because of the recession that happened. And so the Foundation Aid has never gone according to plan and so they're doing a series of hearings around the state. And so, you know, just to be as brief as possible about it, the issues, you know, it's really an issue of equity. And the issues that I discussed were, and that many other people discussed, was the lack, for instance, of a lack of accurate data that's being used in the formula. So for instance, they're using data from the 2000 census. They use data on cost, on our regional costs based on 2006 data. Their poverty data based on a 2003 study, for instance. There are issues in the formula where we are grouped in a region that doesn't reflect the true costs of where we live. We're grouped with, you know, Orange, Sullivan and Ulster counties as opposed to closer to New York City and Long Island. And, you know, there are many factors in that formula that are very difficult to explain. It's very opaque. And so the fact is that we continue to be funded by a method that the court had deemed to be unconstitutional, which is basically an ad hoc, on an ad hoc basis without regard to actual data, accurate data. So, you know, I just wanted to let you know that I did speak to that. This was on December 3rd and the Senate Education Committee is continuing its tour throughout the state. And we'll see what comes of that regarding state funding.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment period. As you know, we welcome public comments. We ask, in respect for each other's time, to limit any comments to three minutes. And as always, you can contact any one of the board members if you'd like to discuss anything. And also that the board members may have a discussion following the public comment about anything discussed, should they so choose. So would anyone like to speak about anything? No public comment tonight. Okay. Moving on to approvals and ratifications. Item 3.1. We're going to move, I'd like a motion to table 3.1. We have some minor corrections that we wanted to make to the minutes, so we'd like to move to table that.
I will move to table 3.1.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we can move to table. Item 3.2. We resolve that the board accepts the minutes of the November 21st, 2019 special board meeting. Can I have a motion for 3.2?
I miss the, that we accept the minutes of the special board meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.3 is first reading of a policy. I don't know if you wanted to discuss that.
This is what I think we should do because we're at nine o'clock. So we have two policies that we have adjustments on. The first, Warren had brought the harassment bullying and discrimination prevention and intervention policy to the policy committee. So maybe, Warren, if you're okay with this, you can share with everyone what you suggested we review. And then I had asked us to review the travel conference and meeting expenses policy based on the, yeah, to reflect the credit cards. So maybe we can just give an overview of our thinking and then if people have comments or suggestions, they can send it to Vicki, Warren and I to review prior to the second reading at the meeting in January. And then there is one policy that has to be approved tonight based on a regulation adjustment. So maybe we can spend our time talking about that policy and making real-time edits. So it's in a place where we feel comfortable approving it tonight. If we can't get through it tonight, then we'd have to meet again before the end of the school year. So.
I'm just curious, like what was the, you know, for 3.3, what needed to be changed? It's just a minor change and I know we can send comments.
So, go ahead, Warren. Did you want to talk about?
Yeah, we wanted to add, I don't think it should be sex and political views, but maybe sex or political views.
Yes, there's some typos there that have to be fixed.
But political views, I think, should be put in there that people are harassed because of their political views.
Okay. And then Margot had suggested, because there was some regulatory language change about hair.
The definition of race?
Well, no, it had to address hair and hair texture, that we were supposed to include this within our policy. At this time, we updated to reflect the regulations. So that's that second piece here. So if you have any suggestions about this particular policy, if you could email us before the, before the end of the school year, before the end of December, that would be great.
And I did send some feedback.
Right, so we got that feedback, right?
I mean, Holly got yours, so.
All right.
Okay, I will send that.
So on 3.4, this is just a real small change in the back, submission of expenses for reimbursement. We just had to reflect the fact that we, that employees and board members could request the use of the district credit card if the purpose order isn't accepted.
Right. So it cross-references it and sends to the other policy, but we need to at least reference it in this policy.
That's correct.
Okay.
So that was the only change there.
Do we have to visit the credit card policy?
We do not.
No, we do not. So then if we could all turn our attention.
Just to specify, Christine, we can request use of the credit card in accordance with the policy.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Right.
So now we can discuss 3.5, which we hopefully will be able to do, and then waive a second reading and.
Right. So maybe because of how we have to do this, maybe we can go paragraph by paragraph if that's okay with everyone. So the first paragraph, so before we start, maybe we can talk about the purpose. So Vicki, did you want to talk about the purpose of the policy?
The purpose is to, is really about civic engagement and to encourage our young people to understand the value of their voice in the electoral process and that, to make it easier for them to be eligible to vote when the time comes. So it's, I mean, I think it speaks, it's for itself, it's to promote student voter registration at the high school.
So now we're all required to do that. So we have to have a policy that reflects that requirement under the law? So the first paragraph, "The Board of Education believes that encouraging young people to be involved in the election process helps to secure the future of democracy by preparing them to be educated, engaged. Voters who have formed the habit of voting and contributing to civic life early." Does anyone have any suggestions regarding that paragraph?
I actually did have a suggestion that I emailed and I was recommending that we rephrase it to say, "The Board of Education believes that encouraging civic engagement of young people helps to secure the future of our democracy by preparing them to be educated, engaged citizens who have formed the habit of voting and contributing to civic life early."
But Holly, that's saying the same thing. It's just using, moving the words and I...
Yeah, but it's saying that they're educated, engaged citizens versus voters.
Yes. Yeah, that was probably the biggest part.
So that's the, okay.
All right, so can we?
I can't now find my, where I sent my, did you all see my changes?
"The Board of Education believes that encouraging young people to be involved in the election."
You know, I am missing some emails.
Yeah, I'm missing Holly's email and I sent changes to this.
I didn't see either of your comments.
Actually, I sent them just to the policy committee.
Okay, well, that would explain that.
I saw Holly's, but I didn't see Jane's.
I don't see it either.
There's been a change to the email system that I think, and I've heard other people say that they missed some emails. And I think there's a setting where I have seen that.
We had this with our athletic planning, that Jason sent a bunch of things and myself and someone else just never got the emails. And I sent a change in this yesterday and I'm guessing nobody got it.
No.
Okay. All right, so.
Just note that there's a problem with the system for some of us.
Yeah, I was wondering why no comment. Did I?
Sorry, no.
That's all right. So now I'm trying to find it.
So "The Board of Education believes that encouraging civic engagement of young people helps to secure the future of democracy." Period. Correct?
But I, I mean, since we have to pass this tonight, I mean, if the changes...
I think we can pass this tonight. We can go through and pass it tonight.
Can we just make the necessary change? Because it's just saying the same thing in a different way, but if you want to.
Well, so I actually, it's high level, the same thing, but I actually, rather than just talking simply about the voting process, I like to bring it up to civic engagement in general. So not just registering to vote and going to vote, but the entire process of being aware of the issues before you're going to vote.
But that's not really dealing with this policy. This policy is.
It's just to allow for registration.
But it does cover that, though. It covers your concern by saying that we believe that encouraging young people to be involved in the election process helps to secure the future of democracy by preparing them to be educated, engaged voters. We could say citizen.
What if we change that voters to citizens?
I think that's basically what I'm getting at.
That's enough. That's fine.
Right, because it does state exactly what.
Okay. All right, let me reread it.
Okay.
The Board of, go ahead.
All you do is change the word from voters to citizens.
Okay, so engage citizens.
Right, engage citizen.
All right, so let me go to the next paragraph. "In an effort to promote student voter registration," this is the regulation part, "the high school principal or other designees shall offer to all students who are at least 16 years old or older."
Who are, we should get rid of two. There's an extra two in there. Shall offer to all students who are, get rid of the next two.
Oh, so it should say at, who are at least 16 years old or older, the opportunity to register or preregister to vote.
If you're at least 16 years old, wouldn't that include older?
This is, this is.
No, because.
Is this prescribed?
It's prescribed. Also, because what if you don't do it at 16?
Here's what I wanted to say.
It's to register or preregister.
Guys, this is what I wanted to say yesterday that apparently didn't get to you. I think we need to add the fact that there's a lack of clarity what's going on with a 16-year-old versus an 18-year-old registered to vote. And when I had asked, Lisa was kind enough to send me the new law that states, "For students who are preregistered, their voter registration will be marked as pending until their 18th birthday, at which point they will be able to vote." I think we need to put that in there to say, and I feel it belongs after that, saying, "In an effort to promote it, the high school principal or other designees shall offer to all students who are at least 16 years old or older, the opportunity to register or preregister to vote." And then we should say, you know, "Students who preregister at age 16 will be marked as pending until their 18th birthday, at which time they will be able to vote."
So maybe students who register before their...
I think it's too worried because it's 16 or 17.
Or before their 18th birthday.
Yes. We, I think, I think we have to put in clarity that they're pending and that as of their 18th birthday, they can vote.
Isn't preregister the same as pending? You're preregistering, you're not registering.
Yeah, and I actually think that that's something that's going to be done by the Board of Elections and not something we have direct control over. So I don't think our policy should refer to the pending or not. We'll just be the.
We're just facilitating the opportunity for them to register or preregister.
These are more for regulations. The policy is very broad and so these are nuts and bolts of how exactly this is going to work and that's left to the regulations. That's why we don't need to put that here. I mean, I think it's, could probably even be inappropriate to put all those nuts and bolts down in the policy. So I understand all that has to happen, but that's in the regulations.
Right, to register or preregister to vote. I don't want confusion with kids thinking I'm registered to vote at 16.
Well, I'm sure when they.
You know what I'm saying?
We, so I think your language makes sense, Jane, but when we had looked about, at like six policies and we didn't see any of that.
Then that's fine. That's okay.
So I'm not sure, either they didn't think about it or they didn't place it in there because of.
Because it's a regulatory topic.
Okay, and as I had asked whether all the mechanisms for how we go about doing that will be in the regulations in terms of how we comply with them.
Exactly.
Then I'm fine with it. That's okay. That's my suggestion.
However, I do think.
No, it's a good point.
On that same sentence, though, I do think that at least 16 years old is sufficient because at least, and at least 16 years old also includes anybody older. We may need to rearrange that sentence if we need to separate 16 years old plus the older.
Or take out at least and make it all students who are 16 years older or older.
Yeah, I think we only need one of those.
To include the students who are, didn't register at 16 but might want to preregister at 17. I understand why there's the at or older, but then maybe we take out the at least because it seems duplicative.
We don't need at least.
The reason, the reason it's like this is because it refers to registering or preregistering. I understand it's not elegant, but that this is the way.
Right, but why do you need at least?
You still have to be 16 to preregister.
You don't really need at least. You have to be 16.
Right, who have to be 16, who are 16 years old or older.
What leeway do we have to change this language?
We can change it. I think what we need to do tonight is adopt it.
And is there something we would be missing by eliminating this?
We should, tonight we should change it to a point where we have it where we're all comfortable. And then if we want to, we should adopt it, this is my recommendation. And then if we want the policy to go, committee to go back and look at it again and make further adjustments, then we can bring it back to the board for another first reading.
I agree with Hillary. I think we can take out at least 16.
I think I agree with Hillary to say all students who are 16 years old or older. We don't need the at least. That is redundant.
That's fine.
It's easy change.
I think that's true.
All right, we're on the third paragraph now.
Students who are 16 years old.
Registration, registration or preregistration by students is voluntary and no student will be penalized for choosing not to do so. Registration, preregistration will not be a course requirement or a graded assignment.
I had one concern with that because we're saying they won't be penalized for choosing not to do so. But I think we should also specify then that a student wouldn't be penalized for doing so as well. Just that no student will be penalized or rewarded for their choice or something a little bit more general. I don't want to leave open a penalty for choosing to do it. Not that I think we ever would, but if we're calling one out, I think we should call the other.
So you're sort of saying like, you're not going to be penalized for not doing it, but if you do it, we'll give you a little grade.
How about there would be no penalty for their choice, for the choices made under this policy?
I mean, I don't know.
I'm fine with it as it is. I got to be honest. Like, I don't, we're saying, we're offering you the choice to vote. We won't penalize you for not taking it.
If you opt out, yeah.
If you opt out. I don't think we have to say it the other way.
And if we have a problem, we can make a change to the.
The only thing that, if you were going to say anything, it would, the reading more appropriate would be, you wouldn't receive some kind of incentive for voting.
So I was, I mean, it was more about not, it's the choosing not to do so part. I was thinking it should be more like, no student will be penalized for their choice.
But that's what we're saying.
No, we're saying that you won't be penalized if you choose not to, but we could penalize you for choosing to do it.
But why would we offer you something and then penalize you for doing it?
We wouldn't. I'm just, I'm just saying that I would just like to, my preference and it won't stop me from voting yes, is that it, that it read, that it's regarding their choice, not specifically the choice not to.
So if I'm a student and I don't, and I don't want to vote, I would, I would want to see it very clearly in this policy that it's my choice not to do that. I wouldn't want to water the policy down. I would want to say that it's okay if I choose not to register to vote. Like, that's where, so I think the language has to be there. Like, you can't make the language neutral where it says, "No student will be penalized for their choice." It's got to say, "No student will be penalized for choosing not to vote."
Here's the other thing, Holly, in my view, we now have a law that's requiring us to offer registration to people. So we're saying, we are required to offer it to you. If you don't take it, you won't be penalized. I don't think we say, "We're forced to offer it to you and if you do it, we're going to penalize you." I don't like the direction that goes in. We're.
Oh, and I absolutely did not mean to imply that in any way.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, I think it muddies it. I think the thing is, we now have a requirement where you have to offer voter registration. So even to address that we might be penalizing you for taking advantage of it, I find awkward. Me, that's just me personally.
So if I'm a student and I'm reading this policy and it's going to be meaningful to me, I think the line is written in a way that's very clear.
Yes.
All right, so you're going to think about a 16-year-old. I don't want to register for vote. What's going to happen to me if I don't do it? I look at this policy and I see it says nothing. I think that's, I think that's probably more important than making sure the language is neutral for purposes of the policy.
So we only have two changes. And we have voter to citizens, we're taking out at least.
Is there a way, when we post this, to link to the resources that'll answer all the questions they're going to have? Like, what happens if I go to college out of state and want to change my registration or what? Like.
We can, you know, I'd have to talk to Andrew about that. Typically, for our board policies, don't have links, we only link to regulations.
Right. And it's like, we're offering them that option. They have to call the Board of Elections to figure all that stuff out.
But let me think about it.
I feel like they're going to have a lot of questions.
This is why, this is why board work is at a certain level and we don't get into the operations of the school district because then we have the regulations and then the administrators and the staff figure out what to do, whether it's curriculum-wise or administrators and the staff figure out what to do, whether it's curriculum-wise or process-wise and how to make the policy work for the students and the staff. And so, so now we're getting beyond boardwork and we're getting into the micromanagement of the staff. And, you know, I can understand why these questions would come up, but, I mean, for every policy, if we delved that deeply into it, we would be delving into all of the operations of a school, of a school district.
Well, I, I respectfully kind of disagree there because I think that this is, this is not school district work historically before now anyway registering kids to vote. And I think that it's very tricky in a way what we're offering to them in this context because they are essentially given the opportunity, preregister to vote, two years before they're potentially voting, when they could be potentially living in another. So, I understand what you're saying, that it's not necessarily appropriate to link it through. I think we just need to be prepared for there to be a lot of questions around this because it hasn't been something that's been in the context.
Well, you know, it's important to note that every, you know, very so often there are new mandates that creates a whole new, opens up a new door to what school districts are required to do. And you'll see over the years, there'll be many new mandates and schools will be involved in many other initiatives and we will be passing many other policies. So, it's important for a board to stay at a policy level and, and not micromanage because the staff will probably come up with better solutions to how to, you know, delve into, you know, the operations.
Right, but it's good for us to discuss it. I'm glad we all go through and say what, what issues it raises.
Right.
And then it's probably best then that we enact it like we have to and we can make changes if we need to.
Those things don't get put into the policy, is my point. All those details don't get put into the policy and we're here today to just pass the policy.
Is everyone comfortable with it as it is in terms of moving ahead so we can waive a second reading? So, can I have a motion to excuse me?
I just want to clarify, the only things that were changed was switching voters to citizens and removing at least.
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we waive the second reading and adopt policy 503 as amended.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for passing that. I do believe it's important that we encourage voter registration, but again, we have another unfunded mandate and we need to figure out how we're going to address it.
Just one general thought, have we reached out to the League of Women Voters?
We haven't done anything because we needed to pass the policy first.
Okay. I was just wondering if they had input on it.
And so, we, we need to, it's just, now we have to figure out how we're going to move forward and meet the legislative requirement. So, thank you for passing the policy in a way that allows Andrew to lead that and not-
And the, the League has in the past come to the school, at least when I was on their board many years ago, used to come to the school and, and register students who are turning 18. I don't know if they're still doing that, but that's been something that was certainly, you know, a priority and important.
Okay.
Okay. So, I present 4.1 instructional as written.
I move that we accept it like superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Congratulations, Heidi. I present 4.2 non-instructional as written.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.2 non-instructional.
Now, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Okay, and we move on to item five.
Give a vote.
What? All in favor? Did we say, yeah? Item five, Recommended Action Other. This is our consent agenda, which we've discussed previously. To make effective use of our time, we will adopt all these matters under five that will go items 5.1 through 5.16. Under a consent agenda, does not mean that board members cannot discuss it individually, so they can pull an item out if they'd like to discuss it. And it's rec, I'd like to, oh, well, I will move that the board approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools, so I will move that. Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion or does anyone have an item that they would like to allow to discuss?
5.10.
Yes.
The Board of Education accepts the recommendations of the Audit Committee to accept the updated, excuse me, risk assessment report covering state mandates, which they've done, and to select payroll as an intensive review for the 2019, 2020 school year. Tobin and Associates has been our internal auditor, not to confuse with external auditor, who takes a look at our books from a statutory review, but they look at internal audit, what, how our processes work. And they do a great job of it and we, we decided from the Audit Committee that this should be something which will get us paid all this time.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. So, that will be our focus for the internal audit. And that's item 5.1. Does anyone have any other items to discuss under the consent agenda?
Just as CSF liaison, I want to thank again the CSF, Top Gospel Foundation for its three Insta grants to Douglas Grafflin, which Adam explained so well, but this is where we approved the grants, so I just want to take the opportunity to thank them again.
Great. Can I have a second for, did we get a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, so, all in favor of the consent agenda under item five?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?